Would you call the roll?
Jim Schreiber. David Kurt. Tom Ter. Jeff Bittsill.
Kim Searshecker.
Dan K. Jackson.
I have proof of posting. Will you all join me for a pledge of allegiance?
(Inaudible)
Thank you. We have a motion to open the agenda. Do you have a second? Thank you. All those in favor of I?
Aye.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from the special board education from the 28th and the regular one from the 28th. Do you have a second? Any corrections or issues? Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. A motion to approve the payroll and disbursements. Do you have a second? Any questions? Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. For president, report. Well, two weeks late, Mr. Donaldson is here. As most you know-
But not a minute too early, two nights ago, two weeks ago.
Yeah. As most you know, I had a nice plaque for John for all of his service to the district and, you know, not just the school, but the entire district. And he came out to the, to Mark's office and presented it to him.
It was still a surprise.
Yeah. He hadn't watched the tape yet. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge you, John, and thank you very much. You will be missed covering things. I'm sure you'll probably fill up here and there in the paper, but thank you very much.
The price is great.
Okay. Board, several things I put in writing for you. Future board presentations, we're talking to the admit team a little bit, perhaps asking some of our staff, one of those that passed the educator effectiveness focus module, but we'd like to do a presentation for you next board meeting on the 25th. Last week, our admit team attended an ALIS training. ALIS is short for alert lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate, I believe. Yeah, evacuate, not escape. I tried to, they mean about the same thing, but that will also be a presentation to the board, also looking for adoption. The difference between what we currently do or what the training has been in the past is the counter and the escape, so I want you as board to be informed and then, you know, once, if you're on board, and we hope you are, then we'll start training our staff accordingly. So it was definitely experience. The first scenario is do what you used to do, and the gunman comes in, unlocks the door, and fish in the barrel. So, and that was it. So, it was a good-
Hold on, Matt, just so you know, I talked to Austin, she told me that that was going on. I told her she could use you as a human shield if you were there.
Yeah. Thank goodness we were in separate, thank goodness we were in separate rooms. So, but very much worthwhile. Also, thank you to Melissa and Scott. We have, Scott has set up 19 Learn Pass. There were 14 or 15 staff members, a couple of them here tonight, Kate and Becky. They have, there's also a train, that was a sponsored training, a training from the grant that we received. We have one more day corporate training, but Melissa's also running one tomorrow and doing some XO tablet for Black Earth staff on Wednesday. So that's a lot going on. Also probably have an update in terms of what our wireless looks like. Scott and I have been talking and working and, you know, just making sure where things are in place, so that may be coming in September. Road update, paving is scheduled to start tomorrow. The new, you know, everything where you've seen the rocks. And then there'll be a switch over next week, and so that will temporarily will run on the, I'll call it the school side of the medians. And then they'll restore the westbound lane to what it, more or less what it was, or what again, what it will be. So they are on target. As I informed the board last week, and just want to update you, I did have a second roofing meeting today. As you can tell, people have been here, worked to mobilize, and so we should be starting Wednesday or Thursday. The goal is to have the tear off, that will be the messiest part of it, tearing off the existing roof. And by the start of school, end date, early to mid-October. Football cooperative, want to announce officially, Barnabell has declined our offer for a co-op in football. So the next step, I'm waiting, the high school, middle school, high school administration will be meeting with our football coach. They've talked about the possibility of eight-man football, but looking for some direction from now in the next couple of weeks. Also, be meeting with Toggers Regional and Amanda on the 19th, just to kind of square up for the school year. Thank you also to John Donaldson, he's willing to help out with the 50th celebration and writing a historical article. One thing, Kim, you had asked at the last board meeting in terms of credit reimbursement. Since 2012, we've had 47 applications for credit reimbursement, breaking it down, 12 of our staff members, and I can get this in a more, I can get it out by email. 13, 13 classes were taken for improving technology, primarily the smart board training that we did. We had one employee that was completing a master's program, that was six classes. Another district initiative or a study, Dale Green was part of this, thank you Dale, the ELC class, that was seven. And then there's four others, 10 other classes were all called content strategies, specific to an individual content area. And then the three others were difficult parents, student discipline, and then some special education strategies. The, today, district administrator's got an email from the DPI, we have received, and these are all embargoed right now, the school report cards for last year. And I can't, I think it'll be late September, late to mid-September when they'll be released by the state. This has been a point of pride for the district, understanding that it's, it's the path to that score that means much more than the actual score itself, though it is a, you know, a comparable metric between districts. Last year, we had two buildings over 80 and three buildings that exceeded expectations. Our goals, informally and probably more formally, we'll talk about a little bit tomorrow with the minting, is how we can get every group up to 80, what does that look like, what do we have to do differently? That may be a topic of discussion in data retreats or as soon as August 26th and 27th. But also understanding that there is variation and knowing what the variation is in our goals, you know, the two goals in a sense, get, I would get every school up to 80 and every school up to exceeding expectations. And so we'll be sharing out. I also, lastly, had a conversation with Brad Simonson from HSR. He's got, he gave me a preliminary update, fine-tuned a few things, and I will get up to, get to you the cost estimates. What he's doing with some of the ranges that we had talked about in some of the key areas is saying, okay, at this dollar per square foot, this is what it looks like, but if you wanted to be in the high end of the range, this is what it would look like. Not trying to get too far ahead or assuming that everything's on, everything's off, et cetera, but I think that will provide perspective and then getting direction. I think we can also tune on that in a buildings and grounds meeting. And then, in terms of meetings, I have some suggestions for the future. Of course, we've got negotiations with the teachers tomorrow for CPI, but also, as Sandy and I have spoken, need to get the, have the employee relations committee suggesting perhaps, looking at the questions for the survey as well as other questions. I know we've had two meet and confirms with teachers as well as one with support staff. There have been some requests. I think the 18th would be a good time to talk about, you know, some of those requests and considerations and dig a little deeper. Facilities and transportation's on the 25th and policy probably on the 22nd. And I left out the, let's see, 22 minus 14 is 8, I believe, so probably finance on the 8th. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you. Did anybody sign up for public?
Me.
Okay.
I have a little report from the teachers. First of all, we are very appreciative for the meet and confirms and being a part of the conversation. After the last meeting, you asked for our input, so I put out a Google survey, and it was a Google survey, and it is this summer. We had 17 responses, and of the 17 members who responded, three voted for option one, nine voted for option two, and five voted for option three. And reasons given for choosing the options, I can give. For option one, recognizes staff who have worked in the district 25-plus years and raises base wage right away, with paraphrases. Option number two, addresses base pay and acknowledges experience in sustained service with a little more recognition for 25-plus years, the upper end of the pay scale lowest in conference. Also could possibly provide incentives for leadership roles and most fair option for all staff. For option number three, cons included, recognizes staff members starting at 10 years of service to the district, provides additional income right away, benefits the most people by dividing pay increase more equally. And again, thank you for asking for our input on this issue.
Thank you. All right. District business donations, do have motion to accept a donation of $636.75 from the Knights of Columbus to be used towards special education community outings. So move. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion? Thank you, Knights of Columbus, very much. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Personnel, discuss possible action to accept the resignation of Jessica Graff, second grade teacher with anxious service since 2013. So move. Do you have a second?
Second.
Here are none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
If I could add, I haven't talked to Dale yet, but he has put together and done interviews today, so I'll talk to him tomorrow. So just want to let the board know.
Cool. Discuss possible action on food service employee number of workdays. Mark, do you want to lead that off?
Sure. And Erin, I'm going to thank Erin for her help with this. So, and Amanda's here, I think everybody's met Amanda, Amanda's our manager. Yep, right there. So, if you want to, on your sheet, page 15, if you want to, this may help, but if you put an A on the top one, a B on the middle one, and a C on the bottom one, just, we consider doing that sooner, but on the other hand, it's easier to talk about it at the meeting, why the A and the C. So currently, as, as it's set up right now, we have posted three openings, a reminder, why do you see some names twice? Because we have staff in probationary status, so that's why you see two different pay rates, so that, once they hit six, six months. So that's, the A is what, what would currently be happening or what has happened in the past. And with that, staff have, last year, had some meetings, especially with the timer transition, and then also did some training and/or some cleaning. The, the other two, and Erin, this is where, you know, it's 175 days, two extra days with additional staff hours, two, two in services, no early release days. So we had added, again, conceptually, working with all support staff, when all support staff had extra professional development time, that the food service also got extra time because they range between two and a half to seven hours depending on their appointment. And, you know, appointments are related to the responsibilities. So, you have one, so B creates a cost savings of $5,800, I'm just using round numbers here. The, the next one includes, the reason why it's a little less, it includes nine hours for monthly meetings. Did that be accurate, Erin?
Yes.
Okay. So, again, as we talked about cost containment, whether the finance committee or as a board, you know, we're looking at options, and when we made the decisions on prices before, you know, we said we'd come back to you with, okay, this is another cost containment opportunity. What does early release look like? And Erin, I know we didn't, with breakfasts, do you have, how many breakfasts do we serve a day?
Yep. I think on average, it was anywhere from across all the, I don't know if that pronounced in front of me, but across all of the schools, it was anywhere between like 29 to 33 meals per day for breakfast, which is small, as far as I-
And at the elementaries, they currently are non, non-cooked?
Correct. It's just a, it's a cold prepackaged breakfast option. At the middle school, high school, we serve two options, Amanda? Both of them are hot options, correct?
So, of course, hot options require some preparation, which is understood. So, even when we've looked at diagnostics, one way to, you know, address preparation, if, you know, if it's all cold or cold on early release days, then you would need preparation. Therefore, one question would be, do we need, you know, staff working on those days? Currently, at the elementary, the cooks do not serve breakfast. It's, our LMCEAs help out with the, with the food. And so the question would be, what would that look like at the middle school, high school? So that would be an answer, a question that would have to be answered, if you will. So, as we've talked about before, nothing's ideal, but we're also trying to contain our costs. This would maintain benefits for all employees. I don't think it triggers anything with WRS, so nothing, none of the benefits would change based on these scenarios. So, I know we, and we've exchanged some emails with Amanda, you know, she's hopeful, you know, understands that we're trying to contain costs. If we're doing a warm meal, she is hopeful that we provide one, you know, staff member at the middle school, high school. But again, conceptually, and this is where we can provide direction, is, you know, who's understanding if we say no, well then, we would serve a cold breakfast. And as Erin said, right now, if, you know, 30 divided by four, seven meals per, per grade level, if you will, the element, you know, Black Earth, Mesa, Middle School, High School. So, again, you know, a lot of staff time without return.
So, would there be lunches still available for kids?
Cold egg lunches, yes. Those are generally been prepared the day before. If something's happened, you know, it just would require preparation ahead of time. And now, Jim, that's a good question, and people have asked, you know, I think, you know, Erin and I spoke briefly, and I don't want to speak for Erin, but, you know, conceptually, we'd like to maintain that option. As, you know, with Erin and I talking, I'm sure other people, students depend on it.
Are those, are those lunches reimbursable?
Yes, they are.
Is the morning prep time? I mean, prep for breakfast is always done in the morning hour, or can't be done, not is anybody done the day before, or the-
Yes, we start the day on, if it's up for a hot breakfast.
You know, and longitudinally, the question is, if we say we're going to serve cold lunches all the time, then conceptually, that would free up the remainers of the days for preparation for other things for that employee. I know that hasn't maybe been considered, but I also want to provide that perspective. If it's, you know, prepackaged lunch, then up at the middle school, high school, you know, you got one employee that comes in at 6:30. Correct, 6:30? Then that would create some, you know, planning and prep time during the non-early release
Do the, do the B and C schedules reflect the, their wage increases?
Yeah. These are for 14, 15, all the wages reflect their 14, 15 wages. And benefits associated with them.
You know, and you can continue to discuss, I understand if you need more information, understand that, but in terms of the employee manual, which is the same as the collective bargaining for support staff, it's 30 days known as from word action. So if you delay, that means we may, but then in the end, you decide, whenever you decide 30 days out is when early release service would be different.
We're recommending C.
Or C? Yep.
That would, that would give the two in-service days at the beginning of the school year, and then one in January, and then that would include a monthly meeting, so Amanda could address, you know, the trainings and, that they did last year with the monthly meetings, which were typically an hour long. So that would still give every month that hour meeting so that they could collectively get together in training, safety, any, you know, issues that come up, help each other with, you know, things that they're working on in the kitchen and whatnot, so.
That, yeah, that wouldn't be an early release day, that would be one extra hour on a current workday, so they would just all, at the end of the day, plus an hour.
And when is your meeting with Congress?
On the 19th.
Okay.
So move, we accept the schedule C.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay. Further discussion?
What's, currently, Mark, the food service is yearly, roughly how much do we, do we reimburse it from the general?
We're, are we subsidizing it?
Yes.
End of the year?
About $60,000 in '13, '14 that we subsidized. The year before was about $18,000.
Any other discussion? Here are none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Discuss possible action to approve Dale Green's administrative contract for 94, 842.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Sure, this is a revision only on the compensation. Erin and I were reviewing administrator pay, and the longevity from the 7 here did not carry forward, we caught it, we notified Dale, and he knew it would be on the agenda. We did check the other ones, the other ones are okay.
Okay. Kim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. All right. Employee manual revisions, discuss possible action on supplemental pay, insurance savings. Do we want to do one and two together, or do we want to keep them separate?
You can, I mean, I'm giving, I wanted to give the board the option.
Oh, okay.
And understanding that one was insurance savings, and the other one was setting up an interim salary schedule, so, you know, if you're looking at me, I look at, they're both supplemental, but they are different, and so I, I wasn't sure if people looked at them together, or if you wanted to talk about them separately because of the merits.
I think they're going to kind of intertwine, so I'm going to kind of talk about both of them together, because, yeah, I think that's just the way the discussion's going to go. So, right now, our options one, two, and three, you've kind of heard, now, you know, what, you said 17 teachers?
So, you know, 25% of-
Yep, 25% of staff. Yep. So, I don't know, does anybody have thoughts on, if you remember, option one was, was including the incentives, P and all the, yep, yep. We haven't thought of the ad since they refreshed. Thank you.
So, so option one is the 1,100, 250, and then $2,000 for someone with 25 years' experience or more. And then we would clarify, we talked about masters and PDP recognition. And we, we talked about that, we probably just need to identify some of those, or, you know, just have some clarification what those would be. With the option two, that's at $1,000 for 25 years or more service. $500 with the ability, if you stay, you know, at least five years, to accumulate a $1,500, that would be 20 to 24. And then at 15 to 19, you would also qualify for, for 500. There could be some, but limited recognition for achievement or growth. And again, we need to clarify there. Option three is the same, but then the 500, 500, 500, 500, starting at year 10. And then the challenge of that, as previously shared, is that there, we need to figure out in this timeframe, unable to, we know what it would cost over five years, but because of how things roll forward, there's less flexibility right now in terms of growth and recognition, in terms of what's available this year and for future years. So, those are the three that we mentioned.
Okay.
And, and three, three came, three came occurred because when we do option two, there's a ban, the 10 to 15-year people ban, their increases are significantly different than the rest of their peers. And so that's why, that's how three came forward, because that provided a better, how should I put it, more uniform, or at least the-
Equalizes.
It equalizes? Yeah, that would be one way of putting it.
But option two and three limits our work and prepared and all that?
Well, it just limits us this year, I can't say that, you know, we just have to continue to work on it.
I think what we got to, what we need to decide tonight is what is the most important thing at the present time for this board to do? Is it, is it to get the merit paid? Or is the most important thing for this board to do is to get our starting salary up, get the increase across the board, and, you know, make sure that we're trying to retain teachers?
If I could just go for option three, then for increases, basically staff are eligible, this is assuming one thing, the CPI, which we haven't agreed upon, I mean, just being clear that we're not, but with that, on option three, then basically employee either gets a veteran employer of 10 years or more gets a pay increase this year of almost $1,400, and the employee that's under 10 years is seven, roughly seven, you know, 1743.
So, and I think the main reason we went away from the 25-year thing was because that was kind of loud and clear at the first meet and greet, I thought that that wasn't an important, an important thing, so we kind of shuffled that money around to accommodate more, and so I think that's where that really came from. So, I, I don't know, my opinion is that it's, the most important thing to me is to get salaries to where we're competitive. We won't ever be the highest-paying district by any stretch of the imagination, but I think we need to be competitive. And option three gives us that, gives us that best case scenario to do that, so that's my opinion. And then, one other thing, well, two other things. One, I would hope that if we did option three, that, that when we do negotiate CPI with the teachers, that it's divided equally. I mean, you know, I'm not going to tie in a motion to that, but I would hope that that's kind of an understood thing, maybe. Maybe I shouldn't say that, but- Maybe I shouldn't say that, but that's how I feel, because that kind of, if it isn't, then the lowest, the starting staff doesn't get up to that thirty-four range, which is where we want them to be, so. So anyways, that being said, but there is also three staff members that, just by the way that the salary schedule has gone, have not been kept up with the rest. And when we bring in teachers at this thirty-two, like we did the past year, or now up to thirty-four, if that's what the board decides to do, we've got some teachers that will be making very close to that same amount of money and have been with the district for a while. One is, can, Mark, can I use their names, or should I just use position?
It's up to you, I mean, it's.
Okay.
Actually, in the end, the motion's going to have to be with their name.
Right. So, Anjella is, has been, would be very close to what our starting staff would be. Cherith Brown, another one that's been here for an extended period that's on the very low end of things. And Tracy Powell is another one, has been with the district for quite a while, that, you know, I think those three we need to also look at. One of the thoughts that I had with them was bumping Anjella fifteen hundred and Cherith and Tracy eight hundred is, were some numbers that I was looking at with Mark to try to get them more in line with where they should be on the salary schedule. So I also want people to think about that, but, so.
Just have one question, Tom.
Go ahead.
I appreciate what you just said. But my one question, and hopefully, here, I just got to find it here. That the, option three will give eleven hundred dollar increase from year zero to nine. Does that zero include people we have hired this summer?
Yes, it has to.
Because they were brought in on last year's salary schedule.
I guess it's always up to the board, but think, conceptually, I mean, how should I put it? I think one of the goals has been to be equitable in terms of increases. And I know, I'm looking at one other, Tom, that's kind of in that range, I may say a fourth person that. I mean, conceptually, I understand what you're saying, and we may want to redo that for a little bit, but I know where you're at.
And Jim, I asked that same question, because I had the same thing, it's like, well, if you're just starting, why would you? And the reason is, is because they were brought in, we haven't got a new salary schedule set yet, we don't have a base salary. If we're doing this thirty-four thousand concept, we don't have that set into place yet. So they had to be brought in at last year's, based on last year's schedules.
As a matter of timing issue.
That's why it would happen.
Does it include, does it include Jordan Durst, who with a starting salary of forty thousand dollars?
As I said, they're right, we said all, so, yeah. I mean, how do you explain to an employee that some people that got hired their first year in the district got eleven hundred and other people didn't?
In the same, in the same question, how do you explain it to current staff? Who, we have new staff who will be making considerably more money than people, even with the gracious offer of increasing certain salaries, they will still be making less money. When we talked about this, you had stated, Mark, that certain positions, we have to be competitive. And I was under the impression that these figures were the competitive numbers.
The thirty-twos?
The thirty-eight fives, the forty fours, the ones that we.
But if you don't continue to move them forward, they fall behind. So I understand what you're asking, but, and again, there's goals with some of them, you know, and again, it's not the place to discuss it in terms of individuals. But, you know, we negotiated and we got them, you know, it's factored in. Otherwise, you know, then we could have just hired new staff at thirty-four thousand, and we didn't. And I think, I think conceptually, the one thing you have to remember is, even under collective bargaining, the rate was set, and the administration always had the ability, and I'm not saying that, you know, that, you know, don't ask me or don't question me, I'm not going there with that, but we've always, you know, when we hired, we placed them wherever on the salary schedule, you know, based on rationale and reason. But there were, quite honestly, some hires that were, you know, at the top end, you know, and again, I'm not going to get into specifics, but, you know, sometimes, you know, the same thing, the same thing you're asking has been happening, you know, as far as I can tell historically, you know, it's been happening here.
Yeah, and I'll disagree with that, Tom, because when they were placed on salary schedule, that was their starting salary. Unless there was a renegotiation.
Which is currently, we're currently negotiating CPI, so we haven't finished negotiations.
I think that's part of the reason why we.
It's, this is different, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Jim, I mean, but in terms of, how should I put it? Tying in that we're trying to respect past, future, and present in navigating where it is. I get it, I mean, I get the question, but comparatively, and this is why people have left the district, is, you know, we were hiring people out of masters at thirty-one. And if you go off to the comparables, people on master's degree, as much as it stings for some of our employees, the masters are thirty-eight to forty-two, I mean, they're right there. And if they can extend out, then they will. And so, and it's not to be, it's just to give someone one more reason to stick.
And all of our current masters, teachers are above that? Would you just have thirty-eight thousand?
I'd have to look.
See, that's the only thing that, you don't have to look for anymore, but that's the thing that I see happening, is that we're willing to offer the new teachers a salary so that they'll come to heights and be very pleased here with the salary. But if that is the only connection that they have to heights, is their salary, that's a whole, that's a whole different issue. But I don't think we can solve this problem just by increasing their salary.
I see this as we're taking one step at a time here, we don't have, we can't do fifteen steps today.
I think there's only one step, but I'm not asking to do fourteen more steps. Just want you to keep in mind, and Tom's initial comment, and I appreciate, is that there are individual circumstances within the teaching staff that do need attention.
Yeah.
And.
But it's a negotiation, but understand, those contracts, freezes were negotiated.
Right.
And that's the balance, and I think at times, it's not only a question for the board, it's a question for everybody. Fundamentally, fundamentally, it's a question for everybody, it's not just for the record.
When you brought that up, Tom, about those teachers, that's the first I've heard of that. Did I miss something? Did I miss an email or a discussion?
No.
Okay, so that was just recently, I've been talking about, okay.
Yeah. I've noticed them, I noticed them before, I noticed them well before we were talking about this. And I just talked to Mark and said, hey, I want to know where these guys fit in and, you know, can we do something?
You know, and historically, the board has done that.
Yes.
It has seen the nuances of the salary schedule and the experience and things, and made those adjustments, so.
Other discussion? Does anybody have any opinions other than option three? Does anybody want to support option one or two, or are people comfortable with three, or where are we at?
I think it's the first step, but I definitely want to still keep reviewing the merit pay and incentives, because I think that's going to be the way to go.
And I think, I think that was, well, I know that was why this discussion even started, was to, you know, everybody seems to be trickling towards that merit pay, and, well, I like the concept, it's very hard to do. It's hard to implement, it's hard to make sure that it's equitable, not just for the current year or the next year, but ten years from now. So, you know, I'm not this huge fan of option three as far as, it doesn't do what we started this whole process to do, but it does do one thing. It gets us competitive in the market, and everybody knows that school is going to start, the salaries are going to be market-driven. And everybody knows that that's the way it's going. And this is one step we can do to say, number one, thank you to our current staff, and number two, get the salaries in a competitive market.
And rewards the people who have stuck with us, you know, supported this district. And that is one, I consider, it's actually merit, but that is, to me, something that should be paid.
That's a consideration.
Yeah, yeah.
It always has.
Yeah, and it should be.
And it's always been recognized.
Right, and it should be. Part of it, right. You know, but I think your statement that we're going to be market-driven, and that's the hard part that this board and the administration have got to try to figure out, is we've got a lot of, there's so many moving parts yet to being in a market-type driven situation, that we're all learning, teachers, staff, administration, boards, to make it work. And, you know, so I think this is, you know, option three doesn't totally get what I like to see, but it does, it's a step forward as long as we keep the other stuff on the tables, keep studying, try to, you know, I think we're worried for PDPs, it sounds like a good idea, and the, I'm sorry, the masters. What, beyond that, you know, I guess the time will tell on that, and I think as things move forward in the next year or two, we'll start seeing other ways of doing that. And maybe that may be patient, a little patience in that sense, but keep studying, it's going to allow us to find a better fit to get to our teachers.
And not only that, but with that savings, with the insurance savings, this is the time to do whatever. That's something that we know is sustainable.
Yes.
And this is it.
Regarding the survey, do you think the results are valid?
I'm not sure to me.
That, I think nine voted in favor of number two.
Does twenty-five percent represent what you think that the rest of the teachers would?
I think that's what you're asking right now.
I have no way of knowing.
That'd be hard to pull from that.
Yeah.
I'd be hard to pull.
Aside from what you've heard from the teachers who've been at the meeting first, I don't have any other information.
But that's twenty-five, isn't Mark, twenty percent kind of the statistic range for surveys, return?
I, it's like Melissa said, I didn't even see the survey, so I can't comment on.
No, in general.
I'm not questioning them, it's some feedback that they received. I'm not questioning how it was, none of that stuff, it's just, twenty-five percent is twenty-five percent. And nobody, well, everybody, although, you know, it's been presented, no one else, everybody wasn't in the same room at the same time here in the same room. Which is tough.
Move to accept option three for the interim teacher's salary.
Before you make that motion?
Withdraw.
And all of your. I would like to, did you have a fourth that you?
I'm not going, I would suggest that you hold off on that, what you suggested, because I just want to do some verification. I don't want to move too quick, I'm seeing, you know, perhaps another person, but Aaron and I need just to sit down.
So for now, let's look at the three that.
No, I would, I would say hold off on those.
Okay.
Just, I think the key is that there's a conversation that's occurred, that said, are there gaps? And then why don't we just, if they're, because the other question that will come out of this is, what's a gap?
Yeah.
And so that's the other part that.
That's a good answer.
I mean, if we're looking at a base, you know, the concept, concept I heard you say, Tom, was it was more of a base salary gap as opposed to achievement or everything else, but I think that needs to be clear. And I think, I think maybe people, you just heard it tonight, other people just heard it tonight, so what is that?
So let's put that on the next agenda then, to have, you guys good with that as well? Okay. All right. Jim?
Move to accept option three.
Okay.
Hold on a second.
All right. This is for supplemental pay interim teacher salary schedule?
So that's zero to nine, eleven hundred, ten plus, two fifty, and then the. Five hundred, five hundred, five hundred, five hundred, and ten years, ten, fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five.
That's what I was trying to clarify. So you talked one and two then?
Well, what you have in front of you is recommendations, or what?
Lionel, but I mean, on the agenda, one and two. C one and two.
Yep.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we do this right as far as, since they are both listed as separate items, do you want to include the term for insurance? Or do we, yeah, I just want to make sure that we do this correctly, so that, I know we're kind of tying the two together, but I want to make sure that the motion is, you know. And maybe we won't have an issue at all if we just.
Be acting separately, people will understand.
Yeah. So, so the motion on the table right now is to accept option three as presented for the insurance savings. Alone first, and then we'll add.
You mean to revise the motion then?
No, because the topic that's on the table is number one, which is the insurance savings.
Okay.
Yeah.
Lionel, but the five hundred, the four, five hundred came in when I asked, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Okay.
When I asked that question, I threw that into the store, or he, Mark pointed that out, so.
We're just doing the insurance savings, eleven hundred and two fifty. Yep.
I agree.
Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And a vote yes. Now, do I have a motion on the supplemental pay interim salary schedule?
So.
Okay. With same motion as option three, yes. Okay?
Yeah, that's the four, five hundred.
Yep. Do I have a second? All right. Further discussion? So by this vote, we will do everything on option three. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff? Kim? And a vote yes as well. All right, discuss possible action on retiree payout.
Just a question, one of many to ask.
Again?
What? After reading this, it looks like it's more of a leaving the district payout than a retiree payout. Is that, is that the changes?
No, actually, all the length, the only thing that would be different would be with the teachers, which would be more leaving the district, actually, the teachers was the only group to have the retirement language.
Right, right, so you're.
No, I'm saying that everybody else was, the different one was the teacher.
Right, but it was upon retirement from the district.
The teachers was, yes.
Right, so what you're proposing is that, is that all of these benefits are, we can't call it retirement payout, it's just leaving the district or leaving the employee of the, of the school district.
Right, but I'm pointing out that the other four weren't any different. This is what used to be there, in fact, I'd probably suggest that taking the fifty years out may be cleaner from a. In fact, I'd probably suggest that taking the fifty years out may be cleaner from a, from future.
I, I agree. I just think that it's, if we lump these all into the, the phrase retirement payout, it's not correct. Because they're, they're not all related to.
Sure.
To retirement. Do we want to discuss each individual one?
Oh, my other point is people have different definitions of retirement, and that's a whole, that could be a whole other conversation.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'm understanding retirement, you're, you're done retired.
Well, that's really not for us.
Not, not leaving the district, go to another district.
I would suggest that that's pretty hard for a board to determine.
I know.
You know, it's what, the question is what do you want to manage?
And, and should we, should we start them all in the same way as, as the manager language, which is E, which says upon leaving the district? Or should we start them at?
Sure.
As D at the time of retirement from the district?
Yeah. The reason why you have what you have is I'm putting in what used to be available. So that's, this isn't.
So some of this was not in the, was not in the employee manual?
None of it is.
No, it was in previous collective bargaining.
Or individual contracts or employment.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for clarifying that too. Do you want to discuss each individual one, Tom, or?
We can frame it up however the board wants to. I, I don't care. I, we can do individuals, we can just lump it all together and discuss everything, or whatever. I like your, I like your E, putting that in.
Upon leaving the district, that's right.
Yeah. But does that open us up to anything as far as changing that language?
I thought it was capped. Wasn't the, isn't sick pay and all that, or? Weren't they originally capped?
Yes.
So many hours, so many days?
Uh huh. But this is payout. That's different than.
Because they had to build it up, and then they can only build so much, right?
Right. But this is, this is a one time, this, well, the support staff reads differently, but, but there's also, there's maximums associated with.
Are the.
There's some that have max.
The administrative language is included in your, in each individual contract?
Right, yeah, that's already negotiated, so you can't change that thing.
At this time, we, we couldn't.
You can negotiate it, correct.
Right. So, so right now, are there any other groups that do have that language in their personal contracts?
Which language?
Or support staff, administrative assistants, teachers, professional staff, and manager?
Which language?
The, the language that is existing on the handout that you gave us regarding upon leaving the district language.
Professional staff and manager.
So, so the three that do not have any language right now regarding that are support staff, administrative assistants, and teachers?
Because the handbook says in individual contracts prevail.
I see an E and administrators, involuntary termination, that's not on the others.
Yeah, could add that too.
So, right now, administrative assistant, you know, those involuntary, still gets that as it's read right now.
Oh, with ten years, correct, yeah.
So getting back to my question, is that we're really just discussing support staff, administrative assistants, and teachers?
Well, it's not in the, it's not in the manual with any of them. So are you transparent and you put them all in, understanding that individual contracts prevail? Or do you just list the three that aren't, you know, aren't in the, you know, the individual contract?
Well, I believe they should, since we're just talking about the three, just as, because they're not, they have no benefit right now, it's, we'll look at this as a benefit. Support staff, administrative assistants, and teachers have no upon leaving the district benefit. Okay, so I, I say we focus on those three, Tom.
Okay.
Because the others we cannot change at this, at this time. It's just a matter of editing the manual or not to put that information in.
And actually, the administrative contract, the sample contracts in the.
That, that's, that's what I thought. It was there. I believe it's, it's important that, that some of the same things are throughout these. Example, the number of years that the people have worked in the district. And again, it's an equity thing.
Do you understand why they're different?
Well, what I'm just looking at is that support staff is ten years.
Yeah, but my question is why, do you, do you know why? Conceptually, that, that, you can continue to talk, but again, I'm just going to reiterate, these are what were, was previously negotiated, so that's why it's in front of you. But the, the support staff concept is, you know, their compensation's different, so they had access to a potential benefit earlier.
Right, these are all individually negotiated. Because this language comes directly from the, from the Wisconsin Heights teachers' old contract.
Old contract.
That's right. So, but just as a base for discussion, I believe it's important that, that they all reflect the same service to the district. And if we have to add that to C, the teachers one, I, I think that that, no, that's open for discussion too.
So you're saying change the fifteen now to ten?
That's what I would propose.
That's what you're proposing.
And it could even virtually be written the same, same, in the same manner, just changing the amounts.
See, and I, and I would say just the opposite. I would increase the others to fifteen.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
You know, I mean, make, if it's going to be a benefit, I want you here for a long time to recruit, you know what I mean?
Yeah. And I, I think it also, yeah, that, and that, I would agree with Tom. And then I would also have involuntary termination at home. So everybody's equal.
Exactly. I mess up, I, you're saying things that I agree with.
Yes. I think conceptually, we're on the same page, it's just some crap.
That was a, that was a, for, for me personally, it was a, it was an incentive. Not, not that I missed much though.
Right.
I did end up missing a few early release days.
Yeah, we heard that.
I was on the list. But, but the fact is, is that, knowing that if I had one hundred thirty-six days, of which the district did not have to get a substitute for me during those days, that, that it was rather important to me. But that's just personally.
Yep.
And, and agree that, that all these groups, we should offer them some incentive.
Yeah. Involuntarily, on the managers and the, and the administration, they're the only two that have that. Or nobody else has that. E and L.
Oh, okay.
Last one. So if you, like I said, it's involuntary, you lose it.
So what I'm hearing then, conceptually, is everybody goes to fifteen of those that we can change or whatever that don't have. Yeah. That they go up to fifteen years, and that we also add the language at the bottom of E, which is if blank is involuntary, involuntarily terminated, the blank loses the right to any payout.
Yep.
Is everybody comfortable?
Yep.
Any suggestions?
I'd say we just re, rewrite it and bring it back to you.
Okay, yep.
I agree.
Okay.
I, I also agree with Mark's suggestion in C, teachers, to remove the age qualifier.
Okay.
For that, since I believe that's the only group that has that.
Not only that, but you've got the potential for discrimination pay.
Yeah.
It cleans it up.
Yeah.
And I believe that, that it changed at the end also to fifty.
Yeah.
But if we eliminate that age.
Ideally, yeah. Yeah, great.
So Mark, if you would, rewrite these, with those changes on them.
Yep.
And then bring them back, we'll put it on the next agenda and discuss it again. Everybody good? Okay. All right. Discuss possible action on employee manual updates.
Could you just give a brief summary of, or two just editorial?
Okay.
I need to breath, you know, we use new place as a, how should I put it, sounding board. So page one or two, first edit is, we revised the medical insurance, it's just updating the dental insurance. It's just to reflect our current practice. And edit two on page one thirty-six is to remove or more, it's just.
Yeah, we will.
Edit one and two, board has recommended by the administration, how you want it worked. That's fine.
Do we make a motion to edit those two?
Is that B?
Yeah.
Yeah, B. B, edit one, edit two.
Do I have a second? Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And all of yeses as well. Okay.
Do three of the points on A and revision? Or need to pugle?
You just passed them. They're on A.
Of the employee manual update?
No, I only did the other considerations for employee manual revisions, edit one and two.
No, those are discussion points. And so my question, like I said earlier, I've included those from a historical perspective. Those are questions that came out of support staff being confirmed, which would go to the committee. And when do we advertise for subs? We do this annually. That's a process. And then there's, you know, three other things. The other bullet was what we just talked about. And then there's the, you know, extra meeting time. And that should probably be employee relations conversation. And then there was a request by employee for reclassification to secretary to count. And board members that had questions were encouraged to talk to me. I've provided the, the information up.
So most of this should go back to committee editor.
Okay. Set committees.
Yeah, I mean, so we've got employee relations tomorrow, and I was gonna, I was wondering if we could meet on the eighteenth to do complete the survey, and then what we just talked about. Any other manual questions or readings?
That's all employee relations.
That is, confirming that at the eighteenth works.
And what time?
Six, there you go. Let's do six. I talked to Isaiah, he just think of A would be doing policy, but. Then facility, the transportation at six thirty on the twenty-second. Finance at six thirty on the eighth. We'll, we'll update you. We're not ready.
September eighth, six thirty.
Six thirty.
So are these six thirties?
And policy on the twenty-second at six thirty? Board meeting? It's the twi- twelfth.
Yeah.
Session?
Work for everybody, thank you.
Good.
Okay. Awesome. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
All you have to read, option four, six, sorry.
Do I have a motion to adjourn to executive, executive session pursuant to state statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation down of any public employee for which a government body has jurisdiction or exercises. Do I have a second? Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And all of yes. Thank you all for coming. Thank you.